Yeah, the memorial state.
Good evening everyone and welcome to our regular committee of the whole meeting for November the third. I would look for a motion to call meeting to order moved by Council Dunstall seconded by Council Cressman all those in favor that carries unanimously. And I'd be looking for a motion to go into closed in section with two thirty nine two B I believe of the municipal act. That's moved by Council Cressman very vigorously seconded by Council Dunstall just so that the public knows it's regarding identifiable individuals in relation to the applications for the prior minister path. And all those in favor that carries unanimously we will reconvene at approximately six P M and open.
To have you all here, I'd be looking for a motion to reconvene in open session as of 6:07 PM. Moved by Council Wilkinson, seconded by Council Kressman. All those in favor and that's carried unanimously. And I would turn it over to Council Wilkinson for our territorial land acknowledgement.
Thank you. We have gathered in Willamette Township on the traditional territory of the Neutral, the Shenahobe, Honegoshone and Mississauga peoples. And we want to acknowledge the importance of the Dish with One Spoon covenant. A peace agreement made between indigenous nations before before the Europeans arrived. It characterizes our collective responsibility to each other and Mother Earth, and we should take only what we need, leave enough for others, and keep the dish clean. By acknowledging this covenant and the First Nations' matey and Inuit peoples, we are reminded of our important connection to this land where we live, learn, and work together as a community.
Thank you. There are no additions to the agenda, so I'd be looking for a mover and a seconder to adopt the agenda as presented, moved by councillor Dunstall, seconded by councillor Cressman, all those in favor, that carries unanimously. Are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest this evening? Seeing none. We do have a few presentations this evening. The first one I want to acknowledge, we do have two of our citizens of the year who are present, so they were acknowledged at the citizen of the year ceremony which happened for the opening ceremonies of the New Hamburg Fall Fair. So I'd like to invite up both Dean Peachey and Krista Strauss, and if everyone could congratulate them, we will take a photo. [Applause] [Music] 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 Very good. And we do have regular presentations this evening as well, and our first one is from the Waterloo Regional Police Services. It's regarding their closed-circuit television and automatic license plate reader program. So I will now invite Jen Davis, the deputy chief, and Jamie Sheridan, an inspector of the Waterloo Regional Police Services, to present. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you very much, mayor. And actually, I have a couple of people with me. I have Inspector Jarrett Brown, who's actually replaced Inspector Jamie Sheridan, so, and then also Jay Heiser, who you will know from our rural officer, and I also have with us David Mullock, our government relations officer. So thank you very much. Is there a way for me to advance the slides or just let you know? Perfect. Well, thank you very much for providing us with the opportunity to come and present to you on our closed-circuit television and automated license plate reader program. We're pretty excited to be sharing it with you. As a bit of a background, you can slide it. In 2020, the Ministry of the Solicitor General launched the Closed Circuit Television Grant Program as part of Ontario's Gun, Gangs, and Violence Reduction Strategy, and the goal was really to strengthen community safety and give law enforcement different tools to use to help keep Ontarians safe. Since that time, we have seen numerous police services begin to implement CCTV programs within their communities. Over the past four years since it was implemented locally, the Waterloo Regional Police Service was implementing our in-car video and body worn video systems. So in 2024, when the province opened up a call for applications, that was when we actually applied for the grant as well, and we were successful in receiving $100,000, which was then matched by the service. The past four years really provided us that opportunity to see what was working elsewhere, what wasn't working elsewhere. It allowed us to test CCTV technology around a couple of specific events, specifically homecoming and St. Patrick's Day, and that helped to really inform decisions around what we wanted to see our program look like. We also looked at the Information and Privacy Commission guidelines on the use of video surveillance and automated license plate recognition systems for police services, and really, it took us about a year to fully prepare what our program would look like. So why CCTV and ALPR? We believe that CCTV is an incredible tool that police can use to keep communities safe. It supports our crime suppression strategy by providing resources and tools where they are needed most, by focusing on areas impacted by violent crime and disorder incidents, and by helping to deter and reduce the opportunity for crime to occur and to assist in investigations and improve outcomes. CCTV supports frontline operations by providing timely access to video evidence that can be used to advance criminal investigation, to alert an officer to a crime vehicle through an automated license plate reader hit, or even to live monitor for a specific event so that we can proactively direct officers to an incident prior to it escalating and needing additional resources. And I would say that's primarily the use for homecoming and St. Patrick's Day. Next slide, please. All of the identified camera and ALPR locations across the various municipalities and townships have been determined using an evidence-based, data-driven approach. Our Services Crime Analyst Unit conducted a three-year historical review of uniform crime reporting data, which we report to the province, citizen-generated calls for service, areas identified as having higher violent crime and disorder incidents based on established sets of crime types, concerns identified by our community members, as well as service-specific considerations focusing on serious offenses such as firearms, break-in enters, and robbery violations. Based on that data, the 10 locations and 52 cameras for our pilot were identified. Next slide, please. You may have picked up on me saying 52 cameras and 10 locations, and that is because each location has different requirements that can be fulfilled using a combination of camera types, including PTZ or pan-tilt zoom cameras, bullet cameras, and multisensor cameras. So pan-tilt zoom cameras will be deployed in areas identified as having higher pedestrian traffic, such as the uptown of Waterloo or downtown Gault. This camera type provides opportunities to scan large areas using 360-degree pan and 220-degree tilt optic zoom. Bullet cameras serve one of two functions, either providing clear footage even at a distance, both in daylight or at darkness, or for license plate recognition, which makes them a useful tool at various gateways in and outside of identified locations across the region. A function of these cameras would also be to alert officers to crime vehicles that we are able to flag and put on a hot list, known for being involved in criminal activity, and would flag if they're driving through a location in the region, allowing for a more proactive response. These cameras are ideal for use in rural townships in the first phase of the rollout. Multisensor cameras cover a wide area, they contain four cameras within one area, all from a single point. Each sensor includes zoom capabilities that can be complied with license plate reader technology as well. All cameras would be mounted and powered using existing infrastructure. Next slide, please. Thank you. CCTV provides several advantages to police services that supports the ability to solve crime and enhance public safety. Although relatively new in Canada, and more specifically in Ontario, there are numerous examples that we have found where CCTV has helped to reduce or solve crime already. Between July 2023 and July 2024, police in Peterborough accessed CCTV footage 48 times to investigate violent crimes, including two homicides. Since launching in April 2024, York Regional Police has seen a reduction of violent crime by 6% within one kilometer of where cameras have been located. Couple of weeks ago, York announced their expansion of the CCTV program across York Region. Guelph Police Service has reported how CCTV has helped to assist in investigations, including shoplifting, break-in enters, vehicle thefts, and missing persons. Most recently, Chief Kobe spoke publicly about how CCTV was used to provide timely information to officers responding in their downtown to deal with a significant violent stabbing incident. Locally, we have already experienced the benefits of ALPR technology. We've located stolen vehicles involved in a shooting incident that was added to our ALPR hot list. An officer was alerted to it by driving past it, and it produced an alert on their terminal which allowed them to actually stop and seize the vehicle as part of the investigation. Unfortunately, we also have numerous examples of where CCTV and ALPR technology has not been available. When had it, it would have likely captured a crime occurring and supported timely criminal investigation. Just last week, we had a robbery-type home invasion incident here in Willmont where CCTV ALPR would likely have provided valuable information in identifying a vehicle or persons of interest. CCTV and ALPR technology is not used for speed enforcement, it is not live monitored, but it does provide the opportunity to live monitor for real-time operations during a significant incident. CCTV and ALPR cameras are placed using data-driven and evidence-based approach. Access to cameras and footage is restricted to select members identified through both internal procedures and through our privacy impact assessment. CCTV and ALPR camera locations would be shared publicly once they have been confirmed, and signage similar to what you see on the right side of the slide would be posted at each location. Included on the sign is a legal authority to collect this information under the Ontario Municipal Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act, as well as a QR code that would direct members of the public to our website where more information on the program and locations of the cameras would be posted. The whole program is intended to be transparent and to ensure ongoing public trust and confidence in police actions. As we have built out our CCTV and ALPR program, we have incorporated recommendations from the Information and Privacy Commissioner. We will ensure compliance with the Privacy Protection provisions, the Municipal Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. We will be using a 30-day retention period for stored data, which if never accessed for a law enforcement purpose, would be discarded after that time. This timeframe has been seen to be a standard for retention where CCTV has been around for many years, and is seen to be both proportionate and reasonable when balanced against one's rights to privacy. It also seems to align with a number of municipal partners actively using CCTV already and with our own crime suppression strategies. The IPC has recommended that WRPS adopt an incremental approach, which we are presenting, including a best practice of operating a pilot program, which this would be the first phase of. We have done multiple incident-based pilots, but see the launch of the first 10 locations across the region as being a more formal approach. We're in the final stages of developing our own internal procedures aligned with IPC framework. We have also consulted with our local Crown's office for the use of CCTV and ALPR evidence as part of criminal investigations, and we have just recently completed our privacy impact assessment. This is just an example of how we actually identify crime patterns. A crime analyst will look at similar-based incidents within a 14-day period, so anything that includes a group of two or more crimes that share multiple commonalities, and they will make note of those distinct criminal activities that are occurring. Once a crime pattern is identified, we monitor and respond to that for a 21-day period. If another incident occurs, we would monitor further for that same time period, but really, this example of why we've shown it is really to show why we're also looking at that 30-day retention period, just for how we identify crime patterns. So that is the presentation. If anyone has any questions.
Perfect. You had three seconds to spare. I was just giving ice to my clerk, like, I don't know what to let her know, but awesome. We do have councillor Dunstall has a question.
Thank you, Sue, mayor, and thank you, deputy chief. I appreciate that presentation. You had mentioned the 10 locations have been chosen, and you also mentioned bringing them on board when there are specific events like St. Patty's Day and that type of thing. Our prime minister's path is going to be going up again, and you may know that the last time it was, there was quite a bit of vandalism, so I'm wondering if this could be used at that location, once that location, and once it's set up? Is that something that we could discuss, that the mayor could discuss with you, or...?
So we would, based on the pilot project, again, how we pick selections or how we pick the locations of the cameras is all based on three years of past data. It doesn't mean there isn't opportunity to partner with different municipalities or townships on additional locations that you might identify as a community concern, so that is an opportunity. And to also look at partnerships, obviously, as we phase this in, you may want more cameras sooner, so there could be opportunity for partnerships that way as well, if you wanted to add more cameras to the system that maybe you supported. So right now, we're not coming to you with a financial ask. The only ask that we have is to use existing infrastructure, so to put the cameras on current infrastructure and just have the power, so it's low, uh, low voltage, power, yes, thank you, just the power, and then your staff to attach the signs to ensure that it's in line with your bylaws. So anything beyond that, we could look at options.
Councillor Cressman?
Yes, through you, mayor, deputy. I was wondering, as a pilot, how long does it last? And as well, I think it was Woolwich that decided not to go ahead, or maybe they're still undecided, so the question is, this seems to be a win-win. Why would a municipality decide not to participate? I'm not second-guessing or throwing mud at our friends in Woolwich, but I'm just trying to figure, what is the, what is the reason why a municipality wouldn't move forward with...?
I can't speak necessarily to the reason why they wouldn't, but what we would want to do would be to onboard every municipality or township when they were ready to be onboarded. So if they would like to see how it rolls out first and then join after, that's fair. It will be a phased-in approach, and we do hope to grow it, so we'll take the necessary steps to do that.
Councillor Wilkinson?
Thank you. Through the chair. I'm curious if there's been any community engagement, if you've gone out to the community to sort of gauge what their interest level is in this, and maybe Willmont specifically. I mean, have you heard anything from them? Are people in favor, are they not? Are they concerned about privacy?
So what I do know, and a lot of it I actually know through Sergeant Heiser, who really engages mostly with the community and businesses in the rural area, is that our businesses are very interested in protecting businesses, their cores, et cetera. Residents may be a little more apprehensive because they don't know necessarily what it means, so we're doing our best to ensure that we're sharing everything. We've done open board meetings, we're doing this meeting at every council, so seven different councils we're meeting with. We have an online information session coming up, we have three in-person information sessions coming up, so a resident can go to any one of those information sessions on the date which works best for them, just so that we can answer any questions that they may have. So those are all scheduled in the next couple of weeks.
Any other questions at this time? Councillor Cressman?
Through you, mayor. Circling back, deputy to the pilot, the pilot then has a definite end, or is it just a soft start, meaning that you'll be ramping up to full engagement?
Yes, I would describe our pilot as being really step one. So it's that period of time, whether it's six to nine months, to really look at, is it meeting our expectations the way we rolled the strategy out? Are all our processes accurate? Are our audits set up properly? All of that, to really evaluate it, and if we need to make any adjustments, we do it in that period of time, only to then expand the program moving forward. We don't see the pilot as being something that we would start and necessarily have to stop, we would hope to see it expand into a full-time program. That's the goal. And we have a, basically a 10-year plan to roll this program out.
Just to follow up, is there an opportunity for municipalities to reevaluate their situation? I'm just... I'm just going off of what our solicitor talked to us about. Is there a courting period, seeing if we're compatible on this, or just trying to figure out that once you say yes, you're forever bound by it?
I don't think anything is forever. I think the best way for me to speak to that is really to see how the programs have expanded in other municipalities and how those relationships have expanded. And I think it was recently in York where it was one of the mayors that actually spoke up and said, "I want to buy more cameras and have more cameras." So we haven't seen anywhere where it's gone backwards. I do, I do know that that a future step will be, and where we're starting to see some municipalities go, is to actually look at a partnership as well on, there's currently existing infrastructure and cameras in every township and in every municipality. So how do we create memorandums of understanding where we can access that footage in, you know, when there's a major incident that happens or a significant, significant incident, and how that feed can actually also go into our real-time operations center to help inform a decision or inform a response to a significant incident? So I think the possibilities are endless with where we could go with this, and it doesn't have to be just new cameras. It can also be, how do we leverage existing technology?
Just before I go to Counselor Wilkinson, I have a question to kind of build on that. So as the program expands and as technology evolves, presumably there will be software updates and capabilities that may change, or potentially even on your side, resources where you may find you want to utilize different capabilities. I'm just curious, would you plan on coming back to councils to discuss those before those change? Like, for example, some of the cameras you mentioned aren't actively live-monitored, but if that were to ever change in the future, would that information be brought to councils?
So no cameras will be actively live-monitored unless there's a specific event?
I understand that. I'm more so talking about the lines of, and maybe I watch too many sci-fi-related things, but if, as technology advances and grows, I know that there's concerns of people saying, like, it might not be live-monitored by a human, but is there AI monitor happening? Is there something to that effect happening? I know that that's some of the apprehension in some of the other municipalities. So I'm just curious, if those capabilities become available features, would we be informed of that? Would councils have decisions if that's utilized in their municipalities? Is that somewhere in the memorandum of understanding that you're hoping for?
That's a very fair question, and I, the best way for me to answer that would be that would, those would be things that we would report on in our yearly, like, we would owe our community a response. So what are we doing to audit our systems, just like we do our use-of-force reporting? We would report back to community on that. So it would be in those reports where that information would likely be shared. I believe if it's a significant change, then yes, we would say, let's go back and actually have conversation around this.
That's great. Thank you. And then one other question, adjacent to this program, but I know when I was speaking with the chief about this, that he was talking about how you already have community members who register their own camera systems that you guys can utilize and some really cool technology that you're able to kind of track as things happen. I was just wondering if you wanted to speak to that, if there were any residents interested in registering their cameras?
Thank you, Mayor. That's a great plug. So that's, it is an independent program, but that's the CamSafe program. So what it is, it's a web-based registry system, so it's not police-owned, but we can access it. So any private homeowner, any business owner, any corporation yourselves, you can actually go on and register where your current cameras are, and you can even take a picture of what your camera may show, so that that's on file. And then when we're conducting an investigation, if we're looking for what cameras might be available in a certain area, we can pull that up and see who has cameras, what the angles of those cameras might be, and then we can contact that owner right away, send them a link. It's called a, it's a data evidence management link, basically, where they can upload their video footage into our system right now. So it's, it's an independent system, it's a registry system, but it does allow us to have maybe more timely connection with community or business owners who may have accessible video cameras.
Thank you. Counselor Wilkinson, do you have a question?
Thank you. Through the chair. It's interesting, some of the points you brought up is sort of where I was going, is, I guess, what does the expansion look like in the future, right? And I certainly can understand and would suggest that a lot of houses these days will literally be recording all the activity in front of their, their home. So we're, we're growing accustomed to seeing cameras out all the time. My, my concerns would be, and what I'd probably want to see addressed moving forward would be, again, where does facial recognition software potentially come into play, right? What sort of defines a live-monitoring event versus a non-live-monitoring? Like, what is that threshold that needs to be crossed? Because I also respect at the same time that a lot of folks want to keep their lives private, and that's a totally fair point. So I struggle, I see advantages and disadvantages from a personal privacy standpoint, but I think from a information-sharing exercise, I can speak on behalf of maybe some of the folks I know that would be wanting to know a little bit more detail about those pieces. Like, at what point does it advance? At what point is that threshold crossed that you're saying, we are going to have someone live-monitor this at this moment, right? So that would be some interesting information, if you could get that out there as well. Would probably be beneficial to the community.
And that is all explicitly detailed in our Privacy Impact Assessment. So there's processes built around it, there's criteria which have been established, so that's all clearly laid out in our Privacy Impact Assessment, for those very reasons. It all comes down to accountability, transparency, and as I said, nothing is meant to be hidden. It's, we're doing everything we can to, to ensure everything is out with the public.
Any other comments or questions, councilors? Okay, seeing none. Thank you again very much, Deputy Chief, as well as to all of WRPS staff who came out tonight. We appreciate you being here. Onto our third and final presentation for this evening. We have Grand River Transit coming to talk to us about the Township Transit Strategy Update. So I will invite up Neil Malcolm, who's our Director of Transit, Adam Fraser, who's the Principal Planner of Transit, and Kevin Marshall, the Manager of Transit Development with GRT, to present. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you very much. I'm Kevin Marshall, and Neil Malcolm was unable to join us tonight. Hello, Mayor Salin and Wilmont Council. On behalf of GRT, thank you for the opportunity to return again today and provide an update on how we are working together to help make transit the easy choice for more communities across Waterloo Region. As I mentioned, I'm Kevin Marshall. I'm joined by Adam Fraser, our Principal Planner, leading our Township Transit Strategy. And over the next 10 minutes, we'll walk you through a quick status update and an exciting opportunity that will help us advance the Township Transit Services for Wilmont for 2026 and beyond. Next slide, please. So our presentation will recap GRT's business plan, particularly around our Township Transit Strategy. We'll provide a quick orientation to Route 77 and how it serves Wilmont today. We'll highlight what we heard from residents through our business plan outreach, and we'll also introduce the Ontario Transit Investment Fund opportunity, our proposal, and next steps in our application process. Next slide, please. So first, I'm very excited to share that GRT's business plan was approved in June. GRT's business plan is made up of a conventional bus and train plan, a specialized transit services plan, and most importantly for today's conversation, our Township Transit Strategy. Since approval of the plan, GRT has been able to source funding opportunities to help accelerate Township Transit Services. We're excited to share that our capital funding through Canada's Rural Transit Solutions Fund has been secured, which allows us to improve stop infrastructure at key locations where Township Transit Services operate. We'll spend most of the day talking about GRT's upcoming application to the Ontario Transit Investment Fund, a unique, multi-year operating funding program that helps us introduce and improve transit service investments in each township. This has been a really key priority of our GRT business plan. So I'll hand it over to Adam, who will walk you through our Township Transit Strategy, the services we offer today, and what we hope to offer tomorrow with our successful OTIF application.
Thank you, Kevin, Mayor Salin, and members of council. Our Township Transit Strategy, next slide, please, shown here, produced a map, our future Township Transit Network, which includes two main types of transit service. These are fixed route services, where vehicles follow consistent routing and a schedule every operating day. And this is what most of GRT's service operates currently in the region. It's also on-demand transit, which is a request-driven service that does not run along a fixed route or schedule. Trips are typically booked via an app or phone call or through a web portal. And GRT currently operates one fully-on-demand service, Route 79 in Bresla. On-demand can be a very cost-effective way to provide great service coverage for areas that typically are lower density or with spread-out populations. So this at-maturity map includes township on-demand zones that don't necessarily follow township boundaries, rather they're, the boundaries are to better reflect travel patterns for residents for more convenient travel. We are grateful for our continued collaboration as we try to recognize each unique feature and transit needs of our townships, working toward this vision. At maturity, a key goal is to provide transit service of some form for all residents of Waterloo Region for better access to essential services and opportunities. Next slide, please. Changing gears a bit, here's a refresher on Route 77 Flex Service in Wilmont Township. So Route 77 is unique. It has features of both the fixed route service and on-demand. The red line in this map shows the main route with scheduled stops. The other colors are short flex routes where the service can deviate from the main route if requests, a request is made via phone call. Route 77 was launched in 2016 as a pilot under a different provincial funding opportunity, and it transitioned past the pilot and has received, continued to receive service improvements, and I would say quite remarkable ridership growth. Presently, Route 77 runs every 40 minutes, weekdays only, from 6:30 in the morning to 7:30 in the evening, with a one-hour break midday. In addition to Route 77, GRT has partnered with Kuanis Transit to offer specialized transit service for eligible customers for the entire township. Next slide, please. Highlights of what we heard through our Township Transit Strategy, specific to Route 77, were that it generally works well, but customers want later weekday evening service and weekend service. They're looking for technology improvements in the vehicles we use and consideration for alternate routing or alternate stops. Beyond Route 77, we have heard from folks in other parts of Wilmont Township wanting transit service or better connection to entities. These themes are also fairly consistent with what we continue to hear through GRT's regular customer feedback. Next slide, please. So the last few slides are really looking to frame or contextualize how GRT staff are approaching the Ontario Transit Investment Fund, or OTIF for short. And this is an unusual funding opportunity, as Kevin alluded to, as it provides operational funding for existing and new transit services. Normally, funding would be just for capital when it comes to transit projects from the province or the federal government. So OTIF offers to cover up to 50% of total multi-year projects, up to five years, with flexibility for how that 50% is averaged over a project's lifetime. The first year has a maximum support of 80%, where the last year has a maximum of 30%. Our recommendation is to submit a phased plan guided by our Township Transit Strategy to meet the funding principles, integrated across municipal and community boundaries, coordinated with a common goal of increasing transit access to communities and services, and sustainable. So working with a gradual transition cost structure allows us to get over some of the initial barriers of starting or expanding transit service and long-term having the costs be handed and managed by municipalities. Next slide, please. Phase one of our proposal is to follow through with some of the key pieces we learned through our Township Transit Strategy. For fall 2026, we are looking to add later weekday evening service and weekend service. Whether or not we receive funding, we are also looking to convert the Forest Hinks Flex Route stops to be part of the main route, as customer demand in this area has been consistently high. Next slide, please. Looking at the first two years of funding, we see a fairly marginal service expansion cost in year one. This is due to the service launching in the fall, so it's only about four months' worth of service at 80% OTIF support. Year two captures a full, a full year of the service improvements with a modest step-down in OTIF support. On an annual cost per household basis, we're looking at around $2 per household for year one and about $6 per household for year two. And this is on a regional tax levy. Next slide, please. In phase two, which for earmarking for spring of 2027, we'll be looking to complete a co-mingling needs assessment. Co-mingling means using the same vehicles and drivers to serve both specialized and conventional on-demand transit customers, instead of serving them separately with separate fleets. GRT is in the process of procuring a technology vendor to modernize specialized transit service and also prepare for the ability to co-mingle. Once the Specialized Transit Modernization Project is complete, we look to leverage this vendor to help us look at the feasibility of co-mingling, really, what would our needs be, and what potential cost savings can we realize in that service model? Next slide, please. Phase three, targeted for 2028, we are looking to expand service with on-demand transit. For Wilmont Township, this includes two on-demand zones, shown in this image as Zones 3 and 4. Together, this covers the entirety of Wilmont Township beyond Route 77. You will see, as I mentioned, these boundaries don't always follow township boundaries, so Zone 2 is, part of Zone 2 includes Wellesley Township, and so the costs of this zone would be shared. Now, to be clear, our OTIF application will seek maximum funding, assuming no co-mingling, consistent with our Township Transit Strategy. However, we do anticipate our needs assessment will provide clarity on the opportunity to implement co-mingling, a co-mingled service rather than separate services, and the value that this service model can offer. This is something we're coordinating, looking to coordinate with the province in terms of how OTIF funding is used, and of course, coordinate with our township stakeholders. So we will be back, and as we work through phasing here, assuming we secure funding. Next slide, please. So looking at the full five years of our OTIF proposal, we can see that the phase-one service hours for Route 77, this bumps up in year one and two, and then plateaus, while the new costs start low and progressively increase as OTIF support decreases. Phase three costs are in here as well. Again, our application proposal is assuming a conventional on-demand service rather than a co-mingled one. We're treating these as maximum costs until our co-mingling needs assessment helps us identify potential savings. We're also showing year six. This is the first year after OTIF support ends. Though forecasting costs get less reliable as we look further into the future, we can say that in that year six, the average household cost is likely to be in the range of $30 to $40 per year or per month, the cost of a coffee at your local, your favorite coffee shop. And as stated earlier, we will come back periodically through the funding program as we can, you know, if we have ridership data, we have more information, we can refine these costs.
That technically was the timer, but you can wrap up.
Okay, I'm on it. Yeah. Next slide, yeah. So here's an OTIF timeline summary. Starting at the top, we're currently working on our application, and we'll be presenting to each area municipality this month, leading into next month. We look to submit our application following the region's plan and budget approval, and then we anticipate receiving notice about funding next spring, and then some stop infrastructure leading into fall next year, and then working through the phasing as identified in my presentation. Thank you. I will now pass it back to Kevin quickly.
Very quick, just to say thank you. Thank you, Adam. Thank you for your time tonight. Really wanted to stress, if you want to go to the next slide on our, our next steps on timeline, so we're doing the same presentation to each of the Township Councils, providing them an update and overview. We'll be heading back to Regional Council, our SID Committee, on December 2nd for endorsement of our, of our proposal and application. And then on December 16th, we have final budget day at the Regional Waterloo, and then after that, be in a position to submit our application. In spring 2026, we commit to coming back to Township Council here, as well as Adam mentioned, for each future phase of the plan, too. So this is very much taking this step by step, and we've really enjoyed this opportunity to come and collaborate with both staff and members of council throughout this process. So thank you for tonight.
Thank you very much, both Kevin and Adam. And I'm really not happy that Neil wasn't here, but I'm glad that I didn't not recognize him in the audience, because I was like, I know what Neil looks like and I don't see him, so glad I wasn't missing to be there. But thank you both very much for coming out. Councilors, are there questions? We'll go to Counselor Kressman first.
Yes, through you, Mayor. I just look on the on-demand Zone 3, I believe, in Wilmont. New Dundee is in a different crosshatch. What does that mean?
Yes, I'm glad you're noticing that, and through, through Mayor Salin. New Dundee is in a kind of an interesting pocket. New Dundee is in a kind of an interesting pocket in the region, especially when you look at servicing that through transit. It stands kind of far away from the fixed routes that we've proposed. So to offer them a bit of a, you know, improved service, there's an overlap. That hatch is an overlap area that would be a possibility of being served by Zone Three that's more, more so in Wilmont Township, and then Zone Four, which is in North Dumfries. So the intent here is that they, depending on where they're looking to go, they could sort of receive service going either direction. Thank you.
Just, just as a follow-up, basically as living near New Dundee, New Dundee residents tend to look to Kitchener as being where they're headed, either with a vehicle or whatever for further services. I would think it begs the question, should not the connection be extending a route from Kitchener? So that's kind of my comment.
May I respond? Yes, I think part of the depth of this, this strategy includes connection points within our rural communities, but also into the urban. So there's an area that we reference as Wallaston. It's a growing area within southwest Kitchener that would be an ideal connection point that we're considering that would be, I think, for New Dundee residents, that point to connect into the city, to the larger GRT network.
Counselor Wilkinson?
Thank you. Through the chair. Appreciate you coming in and outlining this. I want to be very clear, though, this is funded from the regional tax levy, correct? Sorry, I'm seeing nodding heads for those that couldn't necessarily see. I guess my concern is that you guys are proposing a plan here that intends to double the gross annual operating cost, but funding it through a declining grant, and your revenue projections are only 10% of what you're looking to expand the service by. So all of a sudden, you come to the end of your grant, and the taxpayer in general is going to be on the hook for this. I mean, based on the quick math, if we're talking about the on-demand costs and the Route 77 expansion costs, it could be $723,000, not maybe taking into account inflation by 2031. The Wilmont taxpayer, if we're looking at how many homes that we're taking that number by, we could be looking at additional $120 a year to fund transportation services when most folks out here will drive vehicles. And don't get me wrong, I know there's a lot of folks that take transit, but that's a pretty substantial cost to add to the taxpayers' bill, especially when you're not growing revenue, but you're spending that kind of money to expand the service.
I'll take a shot at this one and see if Kevin wants to support. So if we look at Route 77 today, for every dollar spent on that service, we get about 25 cents back. So that, in the transit world, we look at RC, a revenue-cost ratio. So as far as comparing to urban services, that's decent. For rural services, that's outstanding. Like, as a standard, we have consultants helping us on this project. They see that and go, that's, that's really impressive. So the assumptions in our application, I would say, are very conservative. Because we're adding, say, weekday evening service, we would expect not to receive the same amount of ridership in the evening as we would midday, though we have in our data for weekend service that we're looking to add, it's a popular time to travel. So I think in reality, we would be seeing a better RC for the services we're adding than 10%. But for the application purposes, we took a more conservative approach in those numbers. The other thing I will, I will say with our phase three, this co-mingled idea, this has potential to save a fair bit of money, and that's why we're looking to work with that assessment, work with the province to see what savings we can realize. And our understanding with those who are running this program, it's not a all-or-nothing approach, that willing to work with applicants who are really trying to meet the principles of the program and be dynamic in that sense. So that's why we're cautioning, these are kind of maximum values that we do really anticipate seeing some savings in the future and wanting to come back and share those with you.
Follow-up again.
Through the chair, not a question, just, I appreciate your comment in the sense that this is dynamic and changing and that there will be follow-up because it'll be interesting to see how this evolves if it's approved. But try and keep in the back of your head, please, the taxpayers of Wilmont who are looking at funding something that they won't necessarily be a ton of use from the, most of the population, if you will. Appreciate your time.
Just so everybody knows, I have Counselor Dunstall and then Counselor Martin noted on my list, but we'll go to Counselor Dunstall.
Thank you, through you, Mayor. Thank you for that presentation, and I cannot tell you how thrilled some of my constituents are going to be with that evening and weekend, as well as the residents on Forest and Hinks are probably jumping up and down right now, so that's great. Thank you. And I don't remember, and I have my concerns, and Counselor Wilkinson certainly said them better than I could have, but I wanted to know, it's 80% for the first year up to, and then what did that drop to for the second year? Do you, I looked, I couldn't find that. What was the percentage?
It's, it is listed as 77. I believe it's on our five-year table that we would see.
Is it 77? Because I was going to say, if it was lower, why are we stopping doing it in the fall? Because that constitutes year one, which is certainly not going to be nearly as expensive as an entire year. So I was wondering what, why that logic?
You've caught something that's quite interesting that we are working with. We have the, I guess, the municipal calendar for how we finance, and then there's the provincial fiscal calendar that when we look at, and also our sort of, when we typically launch service, and so they're not aligned over those three sort of elements that we have to consider. So the percentages that are shown are kind of a reflection of us making some adjustments for that, but ultimately, over the five-year program, 50% is the maximum they'll, they'll support. But ultimately, by the.
So you're aware of it?
Yes, thank you.
All right, then, that's all I need to know. Thank you.
Counselor Martin?
Through you, Mayor Salin. I wanted to thank you for your presentation, and I appreciate the hard work you're doing on this. I concur with Counselor Dunstall in terms of our New Hamburg residents. I live outside of one of the stops, and I regularly see people waiting at the stop for the bus at various times or basically all the times throughout the day. And I think as you increase the times in evening and weekend, there'll be more people. I have business owners saying that they would certainly appreciate for their employees who are trying to commute by transit to their business for work, that more hours are beneficial. So thank you for what you're doing.
Counselor Stup?
Thank you. Just a quick comment. I want to echo what my fellow counselors have been saying. Being a former small business owner, this is music to my ears and other fellow business owners that having more evenings and weekends expands the opportunity for people to come and go. Another big thing is the Sunday service. We have a Gourd Dwarra in Petersburg, and we have many residents who do the walk from the boardwalk to the Gourd Dwarra, and it's, it's a, it's a highway 80-speed, so this will kind of, two birds, one stone, kind of alleviate that. And yeah, just in general, music to my ears as far as expanding the service, and I'm actually quite impressed how the ridership is growing with Route 77 from when it initially started to having a couple people sitting in there with the driver, and now it's fairly full every time I see it. So there is an opportunity for future growth, future ridership, also with our high school being on that route, with the kids being in Baden area to jump onboard and kind of learning how to use public transit. Born and raised in this area, I've never really had to use public transit and never had the opportunity to, so seeing it in the rural townships is, it's pretty neat to see and to see how it's growing.
And I just wanted to add on, thank you so much for coming out to the township. Yeah, I find transit's a very important conversation around the regional horseshoe, and it's really great that you guys are really engaging with the local level and hearing from our counselors. I do really appreciate you guys making that effort, and having it continued in the plan is also fantastic. I did have one question on the Goudara, actually. Is the progress on an eastbound stop? I didn't see it in the plans of your updates to future state routes, but hoping maybe you have some good news on that front?
We're getting there. I think, through you, I, we presently, for those unaware, we serve one-way today. That isn't the most convenient way we want to operate, and, you know, part of the evenings and weekends does provide a little bit more opportunity to access that. Fortunately, with that one-way service means a longer seat trip time. Again, we flag that for transportation. It is, our transportation group at the Regional Waterloo is evaluating our road conditions, and we have opportunities, we've asked them for opportunities to improve, to allow us to serve both ways. We will say that under this plan, again, doesn't solve that root issue of having stops on both sides, but one of the opportunities with that on-demand service that Adam referenced is that it provides the opportunity to serve the site directly on-demand as well, too. So we don't want to leave it at just the on-demand solution. We are committed to working with transportation to see if there's any solutions we can do to serve both directions as well, too. So that remains. We do see, though, that there's an opportunity under this plan to at least expand access and service as well, too. Thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you. And one other question, on the co-mingling front, and I don't know how far it's been hashed out, but I know on the Kuanis Transit side, co-mingling is actually something we already do because 65-plus, regardless of disability, are on there. But I'm curious, mobility plus, because right now, they don't cross the boundary into the townships. If there were co-mingling, does it allow an opportunity for a resident in a township to go into the city and then still get service back home?
Yeah, so that's a key piece of that co-mingling needs assessment is very much, one thing we've heard loud and clear is particularly when we're looking at those tiered trip components, that we make sure that there's an opportunity for both anybody using the specialized services as well as our existing services to be able to make those trip chains. So that is definitely a key component of that phase-two piece, and really why we want to stress that this is very much the first of many conversations as we go through each phase. So my fingers are crossed that we're coming back here in the springtime with a successful application. We have had really good signals on what we've prepared to date, thanks to the endorsement of this council and others on our business plan. So that's really put us in a good footing. So we'll come back with an update then, what that means for service launch, as well as later in '26, we'll have updates on our technology strategy and the next steps on that phase-two piece to beyond 2026, once we launch the first phase of the plan. So thank you. We are, yes, understood. We will continue to work on that. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much again for joining us, and I think those are all the questions and comments. Thanks. All right. This evening, we have no delegations and no correspondence. We do have three items on consent agenda. Were there any items anyone wanted to pull from the agenda for consent? Counselor Wilkinson?
Thank you. I'd actually like to poll, I think, 11.2 and 11.3, please.
You can speak to both of them.
All right, thank you. So through the chair, quickly on the Petersburg drain, I'm just curious if there's the ability to link the, the engineer's report and maybe any updated documentation as well for residents to access and just have it sort of in a more centralized location or potentially attached to this item when the meeting minutes come up.
Through the mayor, we do not have that report yet. The notice is going out for them, report being delivered. It's supposed to be filed by November 7th. We will reach out to the drainage engineer to see how it's getting posted and where it's getting posted, but we will look at making sure that everyone has access to it.
Thank you. And then through the chair, on item 11.3 with the, the proposal for the tanker truck purchase for the fire department, I don't know where my, my colleagues sit on this, but given our previous conversation on fire apparatus, I'm wondering if this would be more appropriate that we defer to the budget to have the conversation, given we probably want to talk in-depth about what the, the funding model will be for this and how it fits into our proposed capital plan that we expect to be produced by KPMG.
I would look to the chief to correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe this was approved in last year's capital plan. This is just.
Was it 100%?
Yes. I will defer to the chief, but that was my understanding.
Yes, through the, through the mayor, yes, this was approved in the previous budget to fund both the rescue, which has already been approved by council to move ahead, and this apparatus was included in that. The, any subsequent vehicles will be brought to council through budget from this point on.
Thank you. Through the chair, that would be my oversight. I appreciate that update, and in that case, I don't necessarily have any intentions to propose we defer.
Okay, Counselor Kressman?
Yes, just a follow-up on that through the mayor to the chief, Chief Leeson, just wondering, given the different size or capacity of this tanker compared to what was normal in your purchases, what's the marginal increase in cost compared to what originally was approved last year? That was where my question was.
Through the mayor, I think if I understand your question correctly, if I replace the two tankers versus the one, are we looking at marginal costs there? So if I replace the two tankers, as we said today, it would actually cost us more money collectively to replace two tankers than it would this one tanker that's slightly smaller capacity than the collective of the two previous tankers, if you understand what I'm saying. So we have 3,000 gallons of water combined in two trucks. We'll now have 2,500 gallons of water in one truck, but saving us probably somewhere in the range of $3,000 to $400,000 in not purchasing two additional trucks, plus we don't have the maintenance costs and annual renewals of safeties, et cetera. So we're reducing overall maintenance and overhead costs as well.
So just to, just to be clear, follow-up to my colleague's question, last year's budget approved the purchase of two, and this year it's been switched that we're purchasing one instead of two with the above-noted savings. Is that correct?
Through the mayor, we were always buying one tanker to replace the two. That was always the plan during that, throughout that process. There was never an intent to replace the two tankers due to the higher costs, and again, our direction was to try and find efficiencies which we achieved by doing this and cost savings.
Any other questions on consent agenda? Yes, Counselor Kressman?
So then I, I still have the question through the mayor is, the 2,500-gallon tanker is obviously going to cost us more than what the 1,500-gallon tanker that we approved last year in our budget. So I'm, I'm trying to get the handle on what, what does it require from a budgetary point of view for the additional 1,000 gallons? I guess that maybe is my question.
If we were to purchase two 1,500-gallon tankers, if we had stuck with the two trucks or maintained the two apparatus we have now, we would have had to replace two trucks. We would have had to buy two trucks at the cost of somewhere in the neighborhood of $650,000 to $750,000 each, times two. That would have put us in the 1.4 to 1.5 million dollar range. We chose to go with one truck with a slightly undersized tank volume to find that efficiency and save the township taxpayers that, that gap between the 926,000 versus the 1.4-ish million to replace the two trucks.
But I think maybe to get to your question, and this might clear it up, this was in like the capital plan last year approved as it is presented. Yes, to have the one truck at this size funded. So this isn't a new ask. This is simply the process, because it's over certain dollar value, it has to be approved by council once the purchase is made, but it's not a new ask or a change to what we discussed and approved back at budget. Does that clear up what your question, what you're trying to get at?
It was presented with the idea that, that this has increased capacity, and I was under the impression increased capacity means increased cost. And I was trying to ferret out what the increased cost was, not that it wasn't the best solution or the thing we should have done. I just, somehow I didn't catch that last year because we were talking about bumping tankers from Station One to Station Two, which had an older tanker, et cetera, et cetera. So sorry for my fuzzy brain on this one.
It is all good. And last year's budget, we went through an immense amount of asks and items, so I only know it because I went and looked it up because I had similar questions to you guys, so I actually found my budget book and did that. But any other questions or comments on any of the consent agenda items? Okay, seeing none, I would look for. Okay, seeing none, I would look for a mover and a seconder then. Moved by Counselor Dunstall, seconded by Counselor Kressman, all those in favor, and that carries unanimously. And on to reports, our first one is COR-2025-51, and this is formalization of a two-day grace period for tax and utility billing payments. The recommendation is to be received for information and that council directs staff to prepare and implement the necessary internal procedures to implement a two-day grace period for tax and utility billing payments. To get this on the floor, may I have a mover? Moved by Counselor Dunstall, seconded by Counselor Martin, and I will invite the supervisor of taxation and revenue, Emily Woon, to introduce this report.
Thank you, Mayor Salin, through you to council. Through this, sorry, through this report, staff are recommending the formalization of a two-day grace period for the application of a late payment penalty and interest on both property tax and utility accounts. This proposal responds to concerns raised by both members of council and our residents that payments being made through online banking on the due date are often not received until after the occurrence of penalty due to bank processing delays. Most of our neighboring municipalities have already adopted similar internal processes, and this change would align our practices regionally while improving fairness and customer service. The established due dates for payments will remain unchanged, but penalty processing will occur on the third business day following the due date to allow for a grace period of two additional days. This changes to our current process where penalty is applied the day immediately following the due date. In addition to implementing a formal grace period, staff are enhancing our communications both on our bills, tax and utility, and on our website to inform residents of payment processing delays as well as penalty to encourage earlier payments. While this will result in an expected modest reduction in penalty and interest, it supports transparency, residence, resident trans, sorry, resident satisfaction and aligns with the priority of fostering healthy community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Dunstall?
Thank you, through you, mayor. Thank you, Emily, for that presentation. Something had, I had a constituent reach out to me about a $42 fee that apparently, I guess, one year late, in this case it was the due date, but we're asking for two days. The $42 that he was charged automatically goes to his property tax.
So this is a bit of a separate process. Utility arrears, when they are unpaid following the due date, they have a 30-day period in which they have to pay following the due date. If come that 30 days, payment is not received, the arrears become eligible for transfer to the tax roll. The municipality has the authority to do so through the municipal act. So following a due date, we do issue notice advising of any amount owing. The 30-day period is referenced. If payment is not received when the arrears are transferred to the tax roll, that is the occurrence of the $42 fee, and that is as per our fees and charges by law.
Right, and I know it's a bylaw, but so it actually doesn't hit the tax roll for another 30 days. And if they paid that within that timeframe, then it would not. Is that correct?
That's correct. So following 30 days after the due date, if they still did not pay and the arrears were transferred to the tax roll, the $42 fee would incur on the tax roll in accompaniment of the transfer. If they did pay their arrears, there is no additional fee.
Sorry, one more question, mayor. Do you know where we land as far as the region's concerned with that $42?
Yes, I do. Of the eight municipalities in this area, including six within the region, we are the third lowest cost. So there are five municipalities greater, sorry, that have a fee greater than $42. So we're on the lower end of it.
Thank you.
We'll go to Counselors to do first.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a quick comment. I want to thank staff. I had raised this as a concern from some of my residents a little over a month ago, and it's one of those quirky little things that you don't realize is there until it happens to someone, and then they kind of bring it up and we go from there. But I want to thank you for your swift action on this, and I did speak with the residents that advised me of it, and they're actually quite thrilled that we were able to address this in a timely manner and rectify the situation, so kudos.
We're going to go to Counselor Kressman, then Wilkinson, then we'll go back to us.
Through you, mayor. I guess my two cents is on the opposite side of the ledger. I paid multiple bills online, and the banks clearly states that you are to allow one to two days or more to ensure that your payment is received by the due date. And I don't know how it could be any clearer on the bank when you make, if people have a beef with this, have it with the bank, don't have it with the township. And if they think they're going to get grace period in their other invoices, forget it. I mean, I pay large bills, buy bank service fees, buy bank transfers online, and there is due dates, and you have to hit those due dates, and you have to work backwards when you make payments. So sorry, I have limited compassion in this area because it's a lesson that we all learn the hard way, and you make steps accordingly. If you write a check, it goes in your favor. You can hand-deliver it on a due date, and it doesn't come out of your account for a couple of days. And I know when I was buying cattle, that was very convenient because I didn't have money disappearing out of my account for a significant amount of money. So anyhow, if you got a beef, have it with your bank. That would be my answer to this one.
Counselor Wilkinson?
Thank you. Through the chair, I can understand where you're coming from here, Counselor Kressman, but at the same time, I would suggest that, you know, I don't ever remember paying a bill via check or in person. It's always been through electronic transfers through the bank. And I suppose my two cents is that if you're going to put a due date on there and the money comes out of my account on that day, regardless of what goes on in the backend, it's no concern to me. So I sort of look at it and say, I appreciate where this, the spirit of this and where it's coming from and ensuring that there's adequate time to process. Now, I did have a question for Emily here. You'd mentioned that there's going to be enhancements to the bill and the communication. One thing that was pointed out to me was that actually it's not necessarily directly outlined as a late fee, it just sort of appears in the top corner of the water bill. Do you guys intend to clear that section up a little bit?
Through you, mayor, to Counselor Wilkinson, yes, I already have. It was implemented immediately, so there is now a statement on our bills that does reflect the penalty. It is also included in the body of our electronic notifications that go out, so we do have residents that are receiving their bill electronically, they wouldn't receive the physical copy, so it's been included in the body of that correspondence also. It has been added onto our FAQ page on our website, so that was something that I updated immediately. In terms of enhanced communication, our current billing cycle went out in October, our most recent, we did include verbiage on the processing delay reserved by banks. It is something that we do communicate over the phone, but this will now be issued on all of our bills. We'll be doing the same next month, sorry, this month when we run for our township cycle, and we will also be looking to update some of that information on our website so that it's readily available to the public as well. It won't be a permanent message on the bill, but it is something that we do intend on cycling through throughout the year a couple of times, especially as we have new residents move into the municipalities so that that information stays fresh.
Counselors to do?
Just one more quick question. We're going to be implementing a two-business-day grace period, so does that relatively ensure that if I pay my bill on the due date, let's say it's the third, I pay it on the third, will that two-day grace period fall within the days that the township needs to process that payment, let's say for an online payment?
Through Mayor Salin and to Counselors to do, banks are a little bit vague in what processing timeframes they reserve. Some say one, some say one to three. I think two is a kind of happy medium between what we're currently doing and what timeframes might be reserved by the banks. We can't really control when we receive them, so even if we went with a three-day grace period, there is potential that it could still be received after that. It is out of our control, so we're proposing two. I think that that's kind of a happy medium, but we could certainly look at three if that's preferred as well.
Counselor Dunstall?
Thank you, through you, mayor. I'm not sure you can answer this for me, Emily, it may be Director Kravka. It came to my attention through a resident that he rents his property out. The renter pays the utility bills. The renter does not pay the utility bills that he's supposed to, but the owner of the property is not notified in advance because it's a privacy issue. And this two-day period, and then there's 30 days before it goes on to the tax roll, is that still considered the privacy area for the renter? So the landlord doesn't even know that he's having additional funds added to his property tax bill until actually it's added to the bill, and then once it's added to the bill, do you notify them that it's added to the bill? And that's after the 30 days, which means that he didn't know about it, so if he pays for it, he's still going to pay the $42?
Through you, Mayor Salin, and to Counselor Dunstall, that is correct. We do issue a notice to the account holder that they are in arrears. The account holder is given 30 days to make payment, and the utility arrears would be transferred onto the tax roll regardless of utility account ownership. So regardless of it with a tenant or a property owner, we do then issue a formal notice to the property owner to advise them that arrears have been added regardless of if those arrears came from their own utility account, a tenant's account, or even in some instances, a prior owner's account. Utilities are considered an arrears, sorry, are considered a lien on the property because it's the property in which the service was provided, so regardless of who has used the service, it is collectible through the tax roll.
Any other questions, counselors? Okay, seeing none, I will call the vote then. All those in favor, that carries unanimously. On to our second report this evening, and the report COR-2025-52 is Township of Wellesley Poff Drain 2025, Appointment of a Member to the Court of Revision to be Received for Information and That Counselor, to be determined whom, Will Be Appointed to the Poff Drain 2025 Court of Revision. To get this on the floor, may I have a mover and a seconder, please? Moved by Counselor Wilkinson, seconded by Counselor Dunstall. I'll invite our supervisor of legislative services and deputy clerk, Morgan Disp, to introduce the report.
Thank you. Through you, Mayor Salin, to council. Before you today is a report regarding a drain in the township of Wellesley. The township of Wellesley received this drainage report in October and considered the report at their meeting last week. At that time, they determined that they would move forward with a court of revision meeting. As the lands associated with this project also are in the township of Willmont, they have asked that someone from Township Council be appointed to this court of revision. Since this report was issued, we have received an update from their acting municipal clerk to state that the meeting has been scheduled for Tuesday, November 25th, at 5:00 PM at the Township of Wellesley Council chambers.
Thank you. So counselors, with this being moved and seconded, we'd be looking for a volunteer to be on. We'll go to Counselor Wilkinson first if he wants to make a comment, but there might be two willing to join.
Through the chair, I was willing to throw my name in there, given that this is adjacent to my ward, so I would be willing if everyone's agreeable, if there's a challenger or...
No, don't do it. I don't, it's harvest season, I don't need more.
Okay, I'm not seeing any challenges to that then, so we will add Counselor Wilkinson's name into the motion, and any comments or questions? Yes, Counselor Kressman?
Just a question, trying to, looking at where the drain, the new drain is proposed, it seems to start right at the road, and they're abandoning everything upstream or uphill from it. Do I have that right, looking at the? I think it just seems to be, most of the drain seems to be in Willmont Township, but the mouth of the drain in Wellesley going under the road.
I think Acting Director Martin may have a response to that.
Through Mayor Salin, so the lands north of Gerber Road are new subdivision, Stroves subdivision, so this is the outlet from the stormwater management pond, essentially. So it's recognizing existing drainage but modified because the lands are no longer being farmed, they're going to be a subdivision.
Any other questions or comments on this? Seeing none, all those in favor, and that carries unanimously. And on to our third report of the evening, and the recommendation is that report COR-2025-53, Council Remuneration Review Policy, be received for information, and that council approves policy CL-2025-01, being the Council Remuneration Review Policy as attached. To get this on the floor, may I have a mover, please? Moved by Counselor Dunstall, seconded by Counselors to do, and I invite CAO Wilmer to introduce this report.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. This report outlines a policy that provides a framework for the regular review of council remuneration. So I want to be clear that this is about the process, not about the outcomes of those reviews. So in that process, there would be a review cycle set so that it's once per council term, and that would typically happen or would be required to happen during the fourth year with the changes that, any changes that council would approve would take effect for the beginning of the next term of council. So in the third year of council's term, you would determine the review method, and the three different options are set out in the report, and there would be benchmarking from at least five comparable municipalities, and then there are guiding principles for the review, which are also set out in the policy of the report. And any changes that are decided on should take place prior to the beginning of the nomination period for the next election for the incoming council. If there are questions, be pleased to respond.
Very good. Thank you. Counselor Dunstall?
Thank you, through you, mayor. One of the things that I noticed was that there was no target, when you're using comparables, there was no target typically in an organization, they'll say that they want most people at the median, you know, to land somewhere in the middle. So when we're using a comparator, just to be transparent and so that it's justifiable, can we put in some language that says, that sets that standard, whether it's that medium piece of, you know, if it's between $50 and $100, then $75 is the target to have everyone reach that medium piece? Is that something that we can do? And also, for the comparables, we're making sure that it's a lower tier, that it's five lower tiers, I'm asking.
Through the mayor, to your first point, yes, if you choose to do that, you can certainly amend the policy and approve it as you see fit. In terms of the comparators, certainly the language of comparable municipalities could be inferred to that it's lower tier, but if you want to be explicit on that, that clarity may be helpful.
I would like to add those two provisions to this policy. I'm not sure if that would go as an adjustment.
So we'd be making amendments at this point?
An amendment, okay.
So you've moved to make those amendments? Is there a seconder for that? Seconded by Counselors to do, so now this would be discussion on the amendments. Yes, Counselor Kressman?
If you look at 5.3, benchmarking and comparators in the policy, all reviews shall include benchmarking against at least five comparable municipalities, similar-sized structure, service profile, particularly lower-tier municipalities, so I think that piece is covered.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Okay. So you just want to make it that there has to be?
I mean, maybe the medium isn't what we all agree on, but I do think there has to be a set, a set level or set amount, whatever that terminology would be.
Okay, and Counselors to do, are you still comfortable seconding that? I guess my question would just be, are you asking that the amount in a future state, when this report comes forward to a future council, you're saying that the amount suggested, is that mid-level? Is that what you're asking for? I'm just trying to clarify what it is you're trying to get to.
What I'm trying to say is that if we were to get to the medium level, right, that then that would cover, then this council would be comparable to the other councils. I'm not sure if I'm stating that in a manner in which everyone can understand.
I get that. What I'm trying to ask is, so you're wanting to put direction directly into this policy, telling staff, come back with after you do your five comparables at whatever the m- telling staff, come back with after you do your five comparables at whatever the mid-range is, make that be your recommendation to the council? Is that what you're asking?
That's what I'm asking.
Okay. I'm just thinking about that now. I understand what you're saying, though, so thank you for the clarity.
Okay, as long as we all understand what's on the table, perfect.
Are there any other questions or comments on this proposed amendment? Councillor Crespin.
Yes, it would be my impression that when it comes before council with that information, that is then open for debate by the council of the day. And so I might not be as explicit to that. I think the math might be there to identify the mid. But I think at the end of the day, even if you put what you're asking in the policy, it's, it's up to the council of the day to make the decision, the final decision. So I don't think they will be bound by that language because the math will be able to present it.
And further to that, and that's where my processing was going on. I see this policy really as putting it in ownership of staff so that somebody is responsible to ensure that this gets brought forward every term of council. But it does in it still give that staff need to initiate the process of going to council to receive direction on which way to even proceed. That's where I think it would probably be most appropriate for the council of the day to say, come in at 75% or at the 50%. So not that I disagree in theory with what you're trying to achieve, I just don't know personally that I agree with it being in this piece of policy would be, yeah.
I can accept that. I can take that. I'll take that.
So we can still vote on it, though, or are you withdrawing? I just need to know procedurally.
I think I'm just going to withdraw it.
Okay. That sounds good. So that's been withdrawn. Any other comments or questions? Councillor Wilkinson.
Through the chair, overall, I agree with the policy. I think it's interesting, the suggestions in terms of the bodies for review. Particularly, what stands out is potentially having an independent citizen group make the recommendations, which I think makes a lot of sense. The one point I sort of was thinking aloud about and will sort of make a case for now is, is once per term sufficient? I'm wondering if this should be a biennial process where every two years you're seeing a review and perhaps not always the same body. Might be an independent study or staff review, and then two years later, citizen review, so on and so forth. I don't know. I'm just curious if there's any potential support for that or if there's a counterpoint to seeing it done more often. But I would be somewhat interested in looking at potentially a biennial schedule with alternating groups chosen for the review of the remuneration. But something that I was considering.
Anybody want to comment to that or anything else in the report? Councillor Crespin?
Yes, through you, Mayor. I'm of the opinion that other councils do it once per term. And I see that as appropriate. I see, and I inferred from the policy, that the COLA is still in play and then the council has an annual opportunity to determine whether the COLA applies to them or they flatline the COLA. So I think that gives them, that provides some flexibility. I am concerned, and if I remember the numbers properly, I meant to go back and do the actual numbers. But if I look back and look at regional council, the increase they received this last term over, expressed over the previous remuneration in the previous term was 16.2%. And I think, I find, the problem with it a little bit is, by doing it separate from when it doesn't apply to you, people kind of wash their hands, if I may use the biblical reference of what happens previously. But I'm not against this policy. I, I like what it says. I am going to vote in favor of it. I just found that the preamble that we had previously almost was committee work on numbers as compared to policy. And that's maybe where I and some of my other councillors got confused, that we are actually setting numbers rather than developing a policy, although some of, some of the staff was trying to tell us, this is policy, it's not setting the numbers. So I apologize for, for my response at that time.
I think CAO Wilmer has a comment.
Through the mayor, to councillor Crespin's point about, about a 16% increase, quite often what happens is that if a review comes up in the middle of a term of council, councils over many, many decades have been loath to give themselves a pay increase. And, and in a lot of cases, they will even decline a cost of living allowance. And so what ends up happening is over the course of a term, there's zero increase for either merit based on the demands of the work or for cost of living. And so when a review, when a consultant comes in, then it's about catching up to what is sort of perceived to be the right amount. And that can be what appears to be a shockingly large amount. But if there had been COLA adjustments along the way, that would be reduced by half or slightly more than half. And I think it speaks to councillor Wilkinson's suggestion, too, that, that if, if something comes up midterm, the experience over many, many years is that councils will almost inevitably not give themselves an increase.
And just one point, councillor Crespin, and I get your point about regional council in particular. One thing I will note, and I don't know exactly on the 16% number, if it was part of it, but last regional council voted to have benefits for life. And then this regional council got in and undid what they voted on. So there is still an element, if a council decides to really go out of left field on something, there is still an element for another council who doesn't feel the same way to come in and course correct. I guess would be my comment to that, to then kind of also be able to address CAO Wilmer's comment that midterm reviews often don't result in paid changes, per se. So, and I guess my comment, councillor Wilkinson, on your kind of interim, the only time that I really see it as being a benefit would probably be if there's a huge legislative change to the role. And even then, I still don't know that it would necessarily happen because in this scenario, there was a huge change to the mayor's role legislatively. And I still don't think it would have been appropriate to bring it forward and vote on. So I, I get your point and your intent. I just don't know if it logistically makes sense, as well as depending, like, that could get really cost expensive if you're doing every other year, either getting public community members together or hiring a consultant just to assess how much councillors should be paid. Not to say that that's not important, but I don't know if that's the best use of resources would kind of be my comment to that. Yeah. The, the, the one thing I did actually have, though, was on the language. And I'm curious where council falls on this. It does currently have staff by the fourth year before the nomination period starts that council is to have made a decision. I would personally like to see that as before the last budget that that council approves. The reason I would say that is because so long as the province doesn't change, the municipal election cycle, you'll always have a council starting in November of a year. And I would rather that it be budgeted appropriately at the start of that budget year. So for this example, in 2026's budget, I would like whatever changes we make to the remuneration passed as part of that budget, opposed to being an additional item or something that will then be an additional pay on to the next tax year when the new council is in, if that makes sense. So I want it to be already accounted for. And really, it's just moving that timeline that staff would be reaching for. So instead of being before the nomination period starts, having it in time so that council can make a decision as part of their final budget. But again, not impacting then that council of term, but for the next council. Councillor Crespin?
I, I might have a fuzzy memory, and I do, through you, Mayor, have a fuzzy member, memory from, but I don't remember us getting paid after our inauguration. I thought it was in January that we...
It runs January, it, it runs within a year.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm just not clear of your needing to have it in the 2026 budget because it's the 2027 budget that would, would be where the new council is being paid out of. That's my point.
Could we get clarity from staff on that for the next meeting? The reason I say that, and now that you say that, I do have a fuzzy memory going back that far. But I know technically, we were sworn in as of November 15th, and the other council no longer was, and they weren't receiving pay. So I would just want to understand, because responsibility-wise, we were, it is year-to-year, definitively. Okay. Okay. Well, then, in that sense, I guess I would just like if staff could bring forward that clarity. Because that would change if I want to see that language changed or not. But if it is the year-to-year, then I don't see an issue with the way it's worded. On that, any other comments on this? Seeing none? I will call the vote, all those in favor. And that carries unanimously. And staff will bring back the confirmation at the next council meeting on that. Onto our next report, and this one is our Arts and Culture Master Plan report to be received for information and that council approved the 2025 Arts and Culture Master Plan for implementation as presented in the report. To get this on the floor, may I have a mover and a seconder, please? Moved by councillor Dunstall, seconded by councillor Crespin. And I will invite our Director of Community Services, Chris Catania, to introduce this report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Township of Wilmont engaged the consultant Steps Public Garden to 2024 to develop an updated Arts and Culture Master Plan. This project builds on the township's 2018 plan and aligns with the current Community Services Master Plan. Steps was taken or tasked with conducting a policy review, benchmarking with other municipalities, mapping cultural assets, engaging community members, and creating a framework with vision, mission, guiding principles, objectives, and actionable recommendations. The Arts and Culture Master Plan was developed with the intention of enhancing the quality of life in Wilmont through contributing to community well-being, fostering community cohesion, and enhancing offerings that meet the needs of community members for discovery and creative expression, as well to sustainably grow local creative sector through leveraging existing assets, enhancing collaborations, and improving processes. Also increasing Wilmont's attractiveness for residents and visitors, contributing to the local economy through fostering a rich cultural ecosystem, and finally, committing to ad hoc investments chosen based on robust research and engagement feedback to ensure future actions benefit how culture is experienced by the whole of community, or the whole of Wilmont's community. In order to achieve the vision identified for Wilmont's cultural ecosystem, four strategic priorities, or also referred to as pillars, have been established to frame actual items for the Arts and Culture Master Plan. These include pillar number one, celebrating our roots while fostering innovation. This will focus on honoring Wilmont's roots while encouraging creative expression and cultural evolution to ensure a vibrant, dynamic cultural landscape that evolves over time and with the residents of Wilmont. Pillar number two, sustainability of growing cultural resources. This will focus on developing and maintaining cultural initiatives with a focus on long-term sustainability, integrating economic, environmental, and social considerations to benefit future generations. Pillar three, collaborative community building. This will focus on strengthening partnerships with local artists, community groups, organizations, streamline processes, and create opportunities for cultural experiences that are accessible and impactful for all residents. And finally, pillar number four, foster inclusion. This will focus on fostering and welcoming an inclusive environment where residents of all backgrounds are encouraged to participate in and contribute to cultural programming, ensuring equal access and representation. For each of these pillars, key goals and recommended actions detail the concrete steps needed to move towards the identified vision. Success will also depend on a diversified funding strategy that combines municipal investment, provincial and federal grants, private donations, sponsorships, collaborative models, and in-kind support. Staff table draft recommendations to council this past spring, and commitment was made to further refine actual items to be objective, balanced, and attainable. Additional stakeholder engagement was conducted over Q3 of 2025 with our community groups, valued partners, and staff. The feedback received from this process has produced the final deliverable with a designed master plan report presented to council tonight for adoption and implementation. Happy to answer any questions council may have.
Thank you, Director. We will start with councillor Dunstall.
Thank you through you, Mayor. Thank you for the report. I know this has been on your plate for quite some time. And so thank you for that. And I like the partnership-first approach to stretch the dollars and leveraging our natural heritage assets. My concern is that there's a huge, most of the funds are coming from grants. And so that, without that, without the grant money coming in, what are we looking at here? Because, you know, we don't have a whole lot of money. So where would you be getting your funding and how would you prioritize some of these action items with limited funds?
Through you, Madam Mayor, to councillor Dunstall. When we looked at the refinement for some of the actual items, we, we were trying to make sure things were, were objective, but also, when I say attainable, meaning that we weren't stretching too much with items out there for the public that we couldn't commit to financially. So if that looked at, you know, an additional, or additional resourcing that wasn't achievable even in the short term, we didn't include it in the plan. What we propose besides grants is that we do, we can leverage some community partnerships, but also internally, we do have staff that are already, part of their, part of their roles are, are with community development and with arts and cultures. So there are pieces in this plan here where we're leveraging existing staff complement to execute some of the short and medium-term goals that are in the plan.
Councillor Wilkinson?
Thank you, through the chair. I appreciate you bringing this forward. I remember quite well, actually, meeting with the consultants on this. And I think there's a lot of good stuff in there, actually. And a couple of things that stood out for me, and I'm hoping that we can see some action on these, but, you know, the idea of centralizing facility rental access information or a listing of facilities and events and things that are ongoing on our website instead of having a central location, as was suggested, was one that really stood out to me, I think, could be great. Another thing that I liked was that the idea that perhaps an agricultural event of some sort was, could be organized or brought forward. You know, I look around, Wellesley's got apple and apple butter, and Woolwich has maple syrup and a bunch of other things. What do we have? And it'd be nice if we could contribute in some way to really show the support and love that we have for our farm community out here. So, you know, cheese comes to mind, milk comes to mind, there's a lot of that out here, there's pork as well. You know, might be something that would be interesting to see. So that was a good idea. I'm hopeful, just as general feedback, that we can maybe see these goal items being listed in a central area that, that makes it very easy to sort of read all of them as opposed to have to dig through the report. And then finally, just one thing to comment on was, you know, I noted that there was a mention here of finding a dedicated art space. You know, that's something I still hopeful that we can accomplish, maybe not through ownership, but that through partnership or even looking at our own facilities, if there's availability, we can try and provide that back to the community. But overall, appreciate what they put together here. And you got, you've got your hands full, Chris.
Any other questions or comments? Oh, yes, sorry, Director Catania.
Through you, Mayor Salaman, to councillor Wilkinson. Just to add to the point regarding the KPIs and tracking, not even just our own Community Services Master Plan, but obviously what's tabled tonight with the Arts and Culture Master Plan, staff will be looking into with the, with the website launch that we have to, obviously, report out to council annually on the accomplishments that we're making with these plans, but also to try to make it even more interactive so that it's really visible to the community, not just the council meetings, but obviously on our, on our site as well.
Any other questions or comments? I just had a few. One, thank you very much to your team.
One, thank you very much to your team and to the consultants as well that worked on this, and I appreciated the tweaks and considerations that were made after the last update that you guys brought forward. I think that they're really great. I was curious, and this is maybe a broader question, but it made me think about it when Counselor Wilkinson mentioned it. Is there a way in addition to making it more accessible, but in our reports to maybe, I know we have financial implications, I know that we're starting to introduce strategic kind of plan goals, but is there a way to maybe have master plans related and you can pull out items? One, a report's coming forward to council, obviously only if it suits to say, you know, this goes towards action item, whatever in the master plan. I don't need a definitive answer, I more so just want to throw that in as food for thought. Counselor Wilkinson's comments kind of just made me think of that. And then I guess my other question, and this is probably more hashed out in your actual business plan, but I was just curious on some of them, where the ownership lies in completion? It was in some of them medium to long term, especially in the economic development realm, as I know E C Dev normally sits with development services, but this starts to cross over, which I think is really great. But now I'm just curious, when we're looking as progression moves, how that's kind of divvied up, or if that's been fully thought through?
Through you, Mayor Salin, the, the ownership of the Arts and Culture Master Plan will stay within Community Services, and obviously if there's some actual items there that deal with our business community, even some of our organizations, and there's a, an economic spinoff or economic development piece, that's something that we would look into future with if there was a resource that's dedicated to that. And if it's even, you know, that resource is in a different department, depending on if it's the C A O's area or the planning department, our team would be taking the lead, but making sure that we're able to liaise with the appropriate resource to, to ensure that these action items are, are getting taken care of.
Very good, thank you. Seeing no other questions or comments, I will call the vote, all those in favor. And that carries unanimously. And onto our final report this evening, but I do note Counselor Martin isn't here, and I, oh, he is, okay, sorry, you are there, Counselor Martin. It is the report on the expansion of Wilmot's recycling program to be received for information. I will turn, actually, sorry, I will look for a mover in a seconder first. Moved by Counselor Sudhu, seconded by Counselor Kressman, and I will invite our Director of Community Services, Chris Catania, again, to speak to this.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This report provides information to council on estimated costs and resourcing associated with the expansion of a waste diversion program within the township and our facilities. All to, out, sorry, all township facilities have a waste recycling program in place with contracted services providing variance frequencies of disposal based on the facility traffic. Recycling at all facilities is a laborious process that requires significant staff time and training to conduct the proper due diligence, carrying out proper recycling practices. Sorting by staff is a regular occurrence, and if not done properly, results in a costly contamination fee, and the recycling collection is then redirected for disposal to landfill. Organic collection is solely completed at the administration complex, where staff training and accountability result in proper waste disposal practices, and where volume of organic waste is low enough to not have significant financial impact or raise any health and safety issues. Wilmot's current level of service for waste recycling and organics collection and disposal is in line with surrounding municipalities. Municipal comparators lack current resourcing and staff needed to properly, properly collect, sort, and dispose, as well as concerns for health and safety for their staff. To expand a diversion program in Wilmot that encompasses all township properties requires a multifaceted implementation that includes increased staffing, fleet, equipment, and proper education. These costs are highlighted in the financial section of this report, and I'm happy to answer any questions council may have.
Thank you, Director. Questions or comments, councilors? Counselor Kressman?
Excuse me.
Yes, through you, Mayor.
To Director Catania. In reading this report, it was my impression that the focus of the increased cost dealt with the organics portion primarily, and then the other variable that exists is the rental of facilities in the, in the township, and the ability or the willingness of that renter to appropriately sort or have the recyclables and, and landfill articles properly separated. So I think, just to get a feeling, if there's a large event, that seems to be the challenge is that the public understands and cooperates with township staff at some of these venues to ensure that they handle it appropriately. Am I reading the report properly?
Through you, Mayor Salin, and to Counselor Kressman, you are, maybe just to add to that, the increased cost will be associated with the increased, we call them M O L O Cs, the disposal units for, for recycling and organics. So we were looking at, based on the notice of motion, to expand even to our outside elements, into our parks, which we really do not provide recycling at our outdoor elements. There, there are recycling disposal units at all of our facilities, so that when you're inside a facility, there, there's recycling that takes place, and that's something that our internal team will be able to dispose of. But when we started looking at the outside area for parks, ball dimes, soccer pitches, just those sport areas, including even big events, that becomes problematic, and I think from the, what the report is speaking to here is, large events, when we think about M O Par Fest, or Mennonite Relief, or Fall Fair, that is up to the organizers themselves to make sure that they are disposing that. We will assist, but they, they're the ones responsible as part of the permit.
Counselor Dunstall?
Thanks for the report. I, I, I see the value, I just think at this time, you know, this is like one of those really nice to haves, but with the amount of money being touted here, I just don't think at this point that, that this would be something, I know we're just accepting it for information, but that this would be something I would support. But thank you for all the information.
Any other questions or comments, councilors? Okay. Oh, Counselor Martin.
Through you, Mayor Salin, and I appreciate Director Catania, your work and your department's work on this. It, it is something that I think is important, and I keep thinking, okay, well, what, what are we doing for our grandchildren to help improve our environment, or at the very least help to not contaminate it as much? Would there be ways of, now you mentioned between inside and outside, is there a way to only focus on the inside and, and not, I realize my motion was, was trying to be inclusive of, of all the areas? If we were to consider some, some gradual increases as opposed to the total amount, do you have thoughts on this, Director Catania, as to what would be most useful, or what could be done with some impact to our budget, but not the total based on these amounts?
Through you, Mayor Salin, and to Counselor Martin. Some low hanging fruit that our team is, is looking into at this point, and we know that the region is the one for, from the, the waste management piece, but what I found very successful, and this is coming from another region, is taking the lead from the region and piggybacking on a lot of the promotional material that they already have in place, and for us to do that and put it into our own facilities, so that this way, from a low cost perspective, if it's placing pictograms on recycling bins or, or our waste disposal in our facilities that the region already has, and we could probably just, you know, I can ask for that as well. It's the education piece I think is key. It's making sure that the public, not just in their own residential use, but here even in a recreational use, they're, they're diverting the appropriate products to where they need to go. That's the biggest piece, because obviously if they go to a transfer station, from what I've, and I can't really speak as well to maybe Waterloo region, but I know in another region, where most of that stuff's going to go to landfill if it's contaminated. So we as a staff team can do our part to educate our users in our facilities to make sure they're putting the appropriate, whether it's a recyclable plastic bottle into the, into a recycling bin, and if you have specific plastics that are supposed to be going to landfill garbage, then they're, they're putting it in the proper places. I think from an organic perspective, that gets tricky in major rec centers. Again, that, there's still that health and safety piece when I think about the W R C and being able to sort through that. What's listed in the, in the report here is, and what's successful at the administrative complexes, knowing that you have buy-in and, and a knowledge base with our staff complement out of this building, that's primarily obviously used by staff, we're able to divert organics recycling and, and waste appropriately, so that this way, you know, we're doing our part at this facility. It's just a little bit more challenging with organics when you get into the public facilities that the public are mainly using.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, just a reminder, this is to receive for information, all those in favor. That carries unanimously. In terms of announcements this evening, mine are rather light, but I did want to note the upcoming Remembrance Day services on November the 8th, which is this Saturday, at 11:00 a.m. in New Dundee at the gates down by the park, there will be the reef laying and service there. And then of course, November the 11th, the regular service that is down in New Hamburg, the parade will be following to the Senate half, and then down to the Old Arena, where the service will start promptly at 11:00 a.m. as well. Councilors, do any of you have announcements? Counselor Kressman?
Yes, just a further clarification, as I understand it, I guess I'll find out more details tomorrow night at the Board of Trade, who are the sponsors of that. I think they normally meet at the public school at 10:30 and march down to the memorial gates at the former park in New Dundee. And I believe, as I last was informed, that one of the long-serving, well, maybe I won't give too much specifics, but she was a child in, in the Netherlands during the occupation, during Second World War, and she's going to speak in the moments of reflection what it was like to have the Canadian soldiers liberate the Netherlands, and what that meant to her, and so, looking forward to those personal reflections.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other announcements, council? Okay, seeing none. Our business arising from close, the motion is that staff proceed as directed. May I have a mover for that? Moved by Counselor Kressman, seconded by Counselor Dunstall. All those in favor? That carries unanimously. Just before I adjourn, I want to remind everybody, we do have a quick special council meeting, just so that the purchase of the fire truck, now that it has been approved, can go through and staff can do that. So when we adjourn, we don't, please don't leave, we still need you to have that meeting. But I would look for an adjournment of committee. Moved by Counselor Dunstall, seconded by Counselor Sudhu. All those in favor? That carries unanimously, and it'll take just a few minutes to switch over to the next meeting.[1771.38][1771.38]